Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 6, 2011 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of March 2, 2011. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. That is, the Middle Tennessee Medical Center, final plat for one lot on 2.129 acres, zone Light Industrial on GDO 3, located at the corner of North Thompson Lane and Gateway Boulevard. The city of Murfreesboro is the developer. And the other item on the consent agenda is Nissan of Murfreesboro, a mandatory referral for sewer line relocation, and a site plan for 2,230 square feet, an addition on six acres, zone Commercial Highway, located at the corner of St. Clair Street and Memorial Boulevard. Nissan of Murfreesboro is the developer. Is there anybody in the audience, any members of the staff, or any members of the planning commission that'd like either of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Chairman Lamb, I don't wish to have you make a correction on either item.
Yes ma'am.
On the Nissan of Murfreesboro, it's not for a sewer relocation, it's for a sewer service line addition. Just wanted to have that noted in the record, please.
Service line addition?
Yes sir.
Okay. Is it an addition or relocation?
It's an addition. They're adding a service line, that's it. They're not relocating the main sewer line.
Thank you very much. That being said, is there anybody that would like either of these items removed? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for approval to consent agenda.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move into the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first of which is a zoning request to rezone approximately 15.5 acres from PCD to Commercial Highway, 13.4 acres from PCD to RM16, and 12.9 acres from PCD to RS15, located along Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway, Mark Pertle Development's applicant. Ms. Ely, good evening.
Thank you, good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. This first public hearing this evening is for property that's currently zoned PCD, Plan Commercial District. If you take a look at the map that we've prepared for you, you can see that this property is located along the southeastern side of Highway 99 on New Salem Highway, and along the southern and western side of Warrior Drive. It's where Warrior Drive makes the curve and then tees into New Salem Highway. The property is currently zoned PCD. Just to the north, you can see that there's an area that's zoned RS15, and that is located adjacent to the interchange from Highway 99 to Interstate 24. And that property was zoned RS15 as an interim or a holding zone until something in the future will come in request of rezoning. If you look to the northwest, those properties are zoned LI, which are Light Industrial District, and then the properties that are contiguous on the western side are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. The west fork of the Stones River runs along the western side of this property. To the south of the property are some RS15s, residential single-family district lots, and they're developed as single-family houses. And then there are two parcels that are located on the eastern side of Warrior Drive that are zoned PCD. One is for John Deere Landscaping Company, and the other's for Driving Range. Both of those PCDs are inactive, and staff expect at some point in the future there'll be a request to change the zoning for those, since those will no longer have any potential of being used as the plan development calls for it. So the applicant has requested that the property that's currently zoned PCD be rezoned to three separate zoning districts, and that's why there are three colors on the map that you have. The blue area shows the area that the applicant's requesting to be rezoned from Plan Commercial District to CH, which is Highway Commercial District. The area in purple shows the area that the applicant's requesting to be rezoned from Plan Commercial District to RM16, that stands for Multi-Family Residential District. And the 16 is, there are 16 units per acre that are permitted in RM16 zone. The area that's in the orange is the area for which the applicant's requesting be rezoned from PCD to RS15. And the current master plan for the plan development was also included in your agenda packet, since it's on the screen, so people looking at the screen or watching on TV can see what the current zoning would allow. The current zoning allows, let's see, some commercial out parcels, and there's a list of uses that are permitted in those commercial out parcels that I've outlined in your staff comments, and are included in this exhibit that was also included in your staff comments. They've estimated, they're proposing eight commercial out parcels, and of course there's a list of uses that could be allowed in those commercial out parcels. And then just to the south, the current plan allows 75,000 square feet of office complex. And you can see that on the plan that I've also included, and this was mainly to be an office campus or complex where there could be, they estimated 20 offices located there, and there would of course be business offices. And the applicant is coming before you and requesting that the area which is zoned PCD and would allow the commercial out parcels be rezoned to CH, which is Highway Commercial District. CH zone allows a variety of commercial uses. It's something that we see in various areas of our community, Memorial Boulevard, on Old Ford Parkway, South Church Street, and on the other highways, just like this is a state highway as well. The CH zone stated in our zoning ordinance is intended to permit the development and continued maintenance of general commercial uses located in a linear fashion along highways and near transportation facilities and industrial areas. Also, the Salem Pike Land use study has recommended that this property develop as an interstate commercial node with community-scale commercial uses that benefit from regional thoroughfare access and with a potential park site. Now, the area which currently would allow the 20 offices or 75,000 square feet of office space, the applicant's now requesting that you consider being rezoning it to RM16, that multi-family residential district, that would allow single-family and multifamily uses so apartments would be allowed here. And I've estimated that a maximum of 214 dwelling units would be permitted on the property. There is a sizable easement that runs along the property, and of course that would be something that the applicant would have to deal with upon development. Now, the third part of their request is to rezone an area to RS15. And that RS15 area really consists of the floodway for the west fork of the Stones River. So that's an area that can't be developed, and the RS15 zone for the city of Murfreesboro is our most restrictive zone. So as a good faith effort, I believe the applicant has set aside that area, which is approximately 12.9 acres, to rezone it to RS15, showing that that has no potential for being developed. The applicant has also included a 50-foot wide strip, and you can see that just south of the purple area, it's this orange strip, and it's located between the existing houses to the south. And the reason the applicant has included that 50-foot RS15 strip is to act as an additional buffer, so they would like that 50 feet to serve as distance or buffer between the proposed apartments to the north and existing residential uses to the south. There are representatives of the applicant tonight in the audience, and I believe that Mr. Harney and Mr. Huddleston would like to give you, I guess, a brief presentation before you do open the public hearing. If you have questions at any time, staff will be glad to answer them, but...
At some time, I'm going to invite Mr. Huddleston to say his piece.
Thank you, Margaret Anne. Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Pertle Development. We are here to ask for the rezoning, as Ms. Ely has outlined. The reason for this rezoning is that we see the market evolving out there at Interstate 24, here at the State Route 99 interchange. It doesn't really seem to be a good place for office development. The office development seems to be more suited for the Medical Center Parkway area and the Gateway area, as defined by the city of Murfreesboro, and as you have studied from time to time. We do have some empty nester interest in the multifamily property. We see this multifamily as a great transition between the commercial and the single-family to the south, and we are very sensitive to the single-family development in the south of us, and that's why we've provided that 50-foot strip of RS15 between the RM16 proposal and the single-family development. In addition to that, as we discussed in the workshop, that will also require some of our RM16 property to be provided as a landscape buffer to that RS15. Design guidelines are being implemented these days when we present plans, site plans, to you. Also, we expect this to be a very high level of development, as Mr. Pertle has exhibited throughout his history here in Murfreesboro. I'll be happy to answer any questions right now, or I can wait until later if you like.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing and invite everybody to come forward, I'd like to briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody that'd like to speak either for or against the proposal to come forward to the microphone. Please clearly state your name and give your address if you would. Hold your comments no more than three minutes. Make all your comments to the planning commission. If you have any questions, we'll make note of those and ask the staff to address those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Teresa Kidd, and I live at 1035 Warrior Drive, about five or six houses from where the proposed multifamily zoning changes on the property. And I have several concerns that I just want to be sure the planning commission is aware of, and whoever develops the property in the future or designs it, make sure that these things are taken into consideration, because I truly feel like that the residents that already live on Warrior Drive, as well as all the students that have to travel that road, that intersection daily, going back and forth to Riverdale High School, as well as the interstate exit that's there now, and the World Outreach Church, this is just beyond going down Highway 99. All of those factors, the interstate exit, the growth of Riverdale, although their student population may be about the same as it was, but definitely World Outreach Church has grown, I think, since the previous plan was put in place. And because of those things, I just have some real concerns, not only about the traffic, but also about the floodway and the floodplain that is on this property, as they've noted. We just want to be sure, as a surrounding resident, that whatever is developed on that property eventually, that the drainage is adequately addressed. The previous plan, which I believe all of you have copies of, had shown a large retention area, retention-detention area pond down, as you're facing the property, I guess it would be the left side, between what was going to be the office complex and the current residences that are on Warrior Drive. And I noticed, so that was going to be a buffer between the office section and the current residence. So that was going to be a much bigger buffer than I think the 50 or 62 feet that's being proposed now. The other thing is, of course, I don't think they have a plan really at this point, but again, what area is going to be reserved for the retention and detention? Because obviously, the water has not gotten any better in the last two or three years. So, you know, it's a real important factor to myself and the other residents that that is addressed properly. Also, changing it to an RM zoning from the current office and bringing the RM16 zoning much closer to the residences, I have real concern about it devaluing, not only mine, but the other surrounding property owners there. Because there are some very nice houses along Warrior Drive, and again, we're very concerned about real estate, all of us are, but we just want to be sure that something is not done that's going to negatively impact any of our future real estate values. The third thing I'm real concerned about is the traffic, and I'll try to make this brief. Like I said, it's not only do you have car traffic, you've got buses going to the schools, you've got walkers, joggers, people riding bicycles, and even some of the students and some of the teens from the school run down Warrior Drive. I see them all the time running down through there. So there is a lot, besides just car traffic, there is a lot of walkers and students walking or running along that road. And so I'm just real concerned about the traffic being adequately addressed, because there's so much traffic now, especially since I-24 has opened the exit there. There's just so much more traffic, I think, turning on Warrior Drive, that that intersection, and especially as you'll see on the plan, going around the curve, and I think that's where they've got, at least on the commercial, where the road is kind of coming into Warrior Drive, is right there on the curve. And I just have real concerns about, you know, there's already lots of accidents that happen in that area, and I'm just concerned that if there's more, you know, the RM zoning would allow 428, well, 214 residential units could generate an additional 428 vehicles trying to get on and off Warrior Drive right there in a curve, not even counting the commercial. So again, I just want to be sure that whatever is built there or developed there, that the planning commission, as well as the city council and all of the engineers, et cetera, take into consideration the traffic and make sure that it's not going to negatively impact not only residents who live on Warrior Drive, who have to travel through there every day, but also all the Riverdale students.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cleda Brooks, and I live at 1045 Warrior Drive. Teresa has really well outlined our concerns, the fact that our property will definitely be devalued if there's apartments put there. And I'm very concerned about the road, Warrior Drive, is maybe eight or 10 feet higher than this property. When you fill all that in, that water has to go somewhere. We see it sometimes all the way across Warrior Drive, so over into the area between the school and 99. And the water is a real problem. And, you know, we've lived there not very long ourselves, about six years, but this is a very personal area. The neighbors take care of one another, they, we're all retired, except for Mike and Teresa, they're young. But we really don't think that we, we think apartments there would be a bad idea, a very bad idea. We were a little concerned about the commercial offices, but certainly, they would be there from nine to five probably. Apartments are going to be there 24 hours a day, coming in and out. And since 99, no, since the exit opened there on 99, the interstate exit, I guess traffic on Warrior Drive has probably at least doubled, because so many people use that now as a cutoff. And it's almost impossible to get, if you're going eastbound on 24, and you're going to turn left into Warrior Drive. It's dangerous any time of day, but from four o'clock until six, it's impossible almost to get, if people just, they get off, they go down, and they turn right on Warrior Drive, and then they turn around and come back. They can't get across that three lanes of traffic. So traffic is a real problem already, and I can't imagine what it would be if we put apartments there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Anybody else? Please hold your pause, it's inappropriate. Thank you.
Do you mean Bob? Members of the planning commission, my name is Brent Dement. I represent the property across the road, across Warrior Drive, that is zoned RS15. It is, the property is for sale, and I like the way that the application has gone to change that from a PUD to a highway commercial. I think it gives more flexibility to what's going on, instead of locking in such a large area to whatever somebody wants to do. This gives you some more flexibility with a tight economy like it is right now. And we like it, we think it's a better option for our property. So our concern is that we go ahead and do this. I understand the problems with traffic. I've already been to the meeting with you folks, as you rezoned that prior to hit the other zoning you had done, and worked with Joseph to try and see where we could come up with an interest to our property, because our property is denied access on 99 because of the interchange, and the stoplight's going to want to push us down to the curve as far as possible to have access to our property. That's not an advantage to us, we don't think, but I understand that's a problem. Traffic is going to be a problem. But I think that's interchange there, and the adjustment to the floodplain that we have undertaken and gotten approved is a good reason for that to be zoned Commercial Highway, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dement.
My name is Vera Wilson. I live at 1055 Warrior Drive. I've got seniority over all these people. I've been there 25 years. All this land back up in here, it doesn't show it on the map, but there's 500 to 700 acres of drainage, water coming down through there. Right down through there comes a little branch, and they said Middle Tennessee electric right away, right through there. And what this is right here behind everybody's house, I have no idea. Because all of our property, all of our deeds cause to the middle of the river. There's a lot of water coming in the west, and a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb and members of the commission, I'm Richard Stewart. I've got some property just to the west of this property off Highway 99, and, you know, traffic, there is a lot of traffic on Highway 99 and Warrior Drive, we all know that. We also know there's a lot of property out there that's going to be developed in the near future. And I've got confidence in the city and that... I've got confidence in Mr. Pertle that what we do will be top-notch, and you'll address the issues of the traffic, and the engineers will address the issues of flooding. The state's going to be there helping on that issue also, but I... We'll support the change of the zoning on this. I think it will enable us to attract some top-notch developments and tenants in that area, and I think it will be an asset to the community, so I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is John Harney, and I'm here also tonight, along with Bill Huddleston and Mr. Pertle, about asking for the change in zoning on this property. And unlike both of them, I was, became associated with this property about three years ago, when the previous owners bought it and went through the PCD process of getting the zoning put in place. What I think we've had the advantage of now for three years is sort of to examine what the real market and what the likely uses are out there for this property. A couple of other things have changed. Three years ago, the state was talking about the widening of Salem Highway, but that kept being delayed and pushed back. Now, the state's actively acquiring rightways up and down 99. Mr. Pertle has just signed in the last couple of weeks, given the state easement they need, construction easement they need along Salem Highway on this particular property. But what that's going to do is, we've got a brand-new interchange that turned into a two-lane road. The state's getting ready to do a five-lane, all the way to, I believe, Casey Lane is in the first phase. So hopefully, that's tremendously going to help the traffic issues, especially generated on 99. Now, on Warrior Drive, and a traffic study was done on this property before we did the PCD the last time, and what was recognized on Warrior Drive was the fact that there is a pretty severe curve on Warrior Drive that's impacted along the edge of this property. At that time, that partnership group agreed with the city to be willing to donate about an acre when that particular office site was developed, to help lessen that curve and actually create a safer radius in Salem Highway. Mr. Pearl is willing to do the same thing. We recognize that when you get back to where we're proposing the senior living-type product, that that will have to be addressed, because somewhere there's got to be an access for that, so that's the time to address that. And like Mr. Stewart said, I think we all know the city will thoroughly examine the traffic issues, drainage issues, and through the site plan process, we understand that those things will have to take the proper course to make sure they are addressed properly. In having to field this property and field prospects on this property over the last three years, like Mr. Huddleston stated, I think what we found, and I represent a lot of office properties in Murfreesboro, and especially over on the Medical Center corridor, and what we found, what I've found, is there's very little interest in this interchange for office use. But I've had several inquiries about the beautiful nature of the lake there and the possibility of a nice senior living-type product, basically in the same area that was proposed on the PCD for the office use, something to be located in that area. What the city has enhanced is they've just completed the green, or in the process of completing the greenway down the other side of the river and other side of the lake. We intend to make sure that there is a developed walking trail system all along the edge of the lake, on this side of the lake, that comes up and has access to the bridge. The T-DOT plans are to widen the Salem Highway Bridge, make that pedestrian-friendly. So number-one amenity for senior living-type housing now is walkability of communities. So this offers a great access to utilize that and utilize that wonderful, more residential feel of what the lake offers, the same reason that a lot of these people have loved to live down Warrior Drive all these years. It's our intention, certainly Mr. Pearl, and he's the owner of the property, is to make sure that what comes to this property will be of the highest quality. And I think we know that the city's going to make sure that happens as well. But like Mr. Huddleston, I'm certainly willing to answer any other questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Harney. Anybody that's not spoken would like to come up? I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't hear you.
Bobby Mayo, 1075 Warrior Drive. The part they're talking about behind our house is ours. That does not go with this property. It used to be cattle, but there was no cattle out there now. So that's making zip in. And why don't they build nice homes there? I know that part that they had on the start wasn't working, because money ain't right for him. And we don't want no apartments on this property. It would devalue our property, and if that goes, apartments, we all own ours commercial So that gives me something to think about.
Thank you, sir. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Adelot?
Yes, sir. I think I'd like to...
Would you, I think you made notes of the concerns and questions.
I think that Ms. Kidd outlined some very valid concerns that are inherent within development, particularly at this location. I would consider this to be a sensitive location. And it's sensitive because it is located along a major state highway, near an interchange, along a street that's heavily traveled, providing access to a high school and to a fairly central part of our community. It's the kind of place that the traffic staff, the engineering staff, the planning staff are always cautious about. And what you heard tonight are the kind of things we are going to be concerned about. First of all, about the traffic. The traffic is something that is a little bit difficult because of the volumes that are associated with that intersection, with the high school, of course, but also right there at the state highway. there at the state highway. And when the previous zone was put in place, there was a traffic study done. And of course, it did some of the things that our traffic staff expected it would identify. But that is, the intersection of Warrior Drive with State Highway 99 is heavily congested, and it always will be, particularly at the peak hours. One of the things we want to be very cautious about will be access to both the properties to the north that Mr. Demant discussed and the property to the south. One of the things you see in the little illustration and in the concept plan is with the previous development, it shows a little street that cuts through it. And we identify those as out parcels. I'm not sure if they'd all be out parcels or not, but they'd be commercial parcels would be planned. And the idea would be that those parcels would have the ability to get to that street because for your first 100 feet, 200 feet at that intersection, a left turn in or a left turn out is going to be severely limited. It may be very impactful to the traffic on the road. At peak hours, it will be very tough. So the idea is to make a way for access to get you away from the intersection. And Mr. Demant is very correct. When we look at the property to the north, which I think it is a matter of time till that property is before you with the zoning plan, we're going to have to look very carefully at the access for it. Also, the issue of traffic that goes with it is, a consideration that goes with it is site distance. That curve in Warrior Drive is, well, it was built before we had the traffic that we have in our community and the land uses that we have in our community. It was built as an access road to a high school, and it wasn't built with the type of traffic that it currently has. We see a need to make that curve more gentle, and that was also identified in the traffic study that's previously done. And we're going to expect that with a development of this property when it begins, that there will be rightways set aside and roadway improvements done to help that. Also, with the multifamily development, I would expect, it's almost a foregone conclusion that there's going to need to be some sort of left-turn lanes added to facilitate access to them in Warrior Drive. But that's all, that's the kind of things that go with sensitive locations and heavily traveled streets and along substandard streets. Warrior Drive is a well-built road, but it is substandard in the sense that it does not have curbs and gutters, it does not have sidewalks, and it doesn't have a center turn lane in a place that probably needs it. So that's something that's going to be very much on our minds when we review subdivision plates in the future. We will be looking at that, and it'll be back before you for you to look at. Stormwater is something that is very much on our minds, and the gentleman that spoke about the 500 or so acres, I'm not sure it's 500 acres, but it is a large drainage basin. And the property across Warrior Drive, this property, has had a chronic flooding condition. It often fills up with water. It's a low area. It has been a very limiting factor on that property for many years. The water actually comes from the other side of the interstate, and it goes under the interstate to this property when the system is tanked up, when there's a lot of rain. And sometimes it pools for extended periods across the road, and he is correct. It does go through what he identifies as a little creek, a little branch. One of the things we're going to be looking at is that the drainage impact of future development does not impact the system in a negative way. And we will require that there be on-site detention and more than likely on-site retention. The new stormwater regulations are going to be basically requiring the first inch of a rainfall to be retained on-site. And that's going to change the way- And you're going to hear more about this as a planning commission because we're having to look at our regulations. But the new stormwater regulations that we currently have cause us to have to detain and retain for water quality, but also for stream bank protection downstream. The idea being that we hold the water back. That is going to apply here probably even to a greater extent because of the new regulations. So stormwater is something that will be very much on our minds in the future. Other issues, I'm not sure that I heard a whole lot of other voice about property values, that sort of speculative thing. I know that this property with the RM16, at some point between commercial and established neighborhoods, there has to be a transition of uses. And at some point, it's not, that line has to be drawn. Mr. Pearl is bringing to us a plan where that line is drawn adjacent to the existing residences and is proposing that to the north of that line, it'd be allowed to have an area for multifamily transitioning into the more commercial-oriented interstate, commercial area. Then, in many respects, we have viewed as good planning to see that type of transition. The other alternative, or another possible alternative, would be to see residential, single-family for all the way up to the interchange or to Salem Highway. That would, I don't think that's good planning for the type of property it is for the total community. You'd be forcing somebody who would be living in a single-family home to live in an environment that might be, you won't be necessarily forcing an individual, but you'd create an environment where they may not be very happy. So it's probably best for the total community that we see commercial at that location. Somewhere in between the transition, the multifamily has often been viewed, so the transitioned use is a stair stepping of intensity, stair stepping down to the single family. The development plans that I have discussed with the applicant's engineer and development team has been to look at mining for the fill material for the back part of the site and to create a retention on the south part of this property. So the planned development illustration that you see in your package of the original office condominium, office campus, showed a detention area along the south line adjacent to the single-family residents. It is probably, we will see some version of that for whatever, if we see a multifamily complex taken here, because a lot of the same circumstances still apply. You've still got that very large power line easement across the site. You've still got the need to fill a portion of the property, and you've still got the need to detain. When those come together, it looks like it would be very sensible to expect to see the excavation on the south side creating your detention-retention area there. Of course, with a very bright engineers, there's other possibilities that may come up, but I still see that as a very real possibility. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Did you mention the Salem land use plan?
No, I did not. Ms. Ely did in her presentation. And of course, the commercial is right on point with the Seven Pike land use study and is right on point. The multifamily is less on point, but it's not totally adverse to it. You would expect to see that type of buffering, and the Seven Pike land use plan did recommend that there be transitions of land uses from real intense uses to less intense uses.
Mr. Young?
Ms. Adeloff, you mentioned that the state was buying rightaway along 99.
Actually, Mr. Harney mentioned that.
Okay, somebody did. Whoever. That's a pretty strong signal that that road's going to be built relatively soon. Is there, can you enlighten us on anything on that road construction project?
Just before the meeting, I asked Ms. Ely to consult our engineering staff and the audience tonight. I don't think it's on the bid list this year for the state, but typically, the way the state works, they go through a period of engineering, then rightaway acquisition, and then construction. With that sequence being typical, if they're in their rightaway acquisition phase, which it's my understanding they are, they've already got the design phase pretty much behind them, and they're getting ready to bid probably as budget allows, possibly next year, hopefully next year.
I think that's going to be a five-lane highway.
Yes, sir, it will be. Something else I want to mention about the Seven Pike that I think is relevant, the city has gone a long ways towards supporting that project for the state. And the state is very much aware of the city's desire to see it move, and the city has made a lot of effort into keeping this project going. So I think that's going to help the city move forward.
You touched on the fact that some major things are going to have to be done on Warrior Drive, possibly turning lanes. Someone had mentioned something about some land donation to help with that curve situation. That's almost got to happen with any kind of development on that.
Yes, sir, it does. I think if we had our ability to turn back the clock and influence the original design of that road, we would do what we could to moderate. Bear in mind, that was built a long time before it was ever annexed into the city.
Seventy-two?
I wasn't here. It pre-dates me.
Riverdale opened in seventy-two, so that road was built right before they were open. Is that right, Bobby?
I wasn't there.
Yeah, I wasn't either, but that's a long time ago. Thirty-five, thirty-six years.
Yes, sir, we've got to make that curve more gentle. That has been problematic. People run off one side, and it's got a super elevation, but they seem to. It doesn't give the kind of visual signals that it needs to. There's been some historical issues associated with it, and we'd like to see it improved. And when we see development happens, that's our ticket. The planning staff and the engineering staff and traffic staff have got very good at identifying these type of problems and asking developers to step up and do what they need to do.
Anything else, Mr. Young?
Let's see, we talked about the road. Okay, and you mentioned the transitional zone from our multifamily, residential multifamily to commercial. You want to review that very quickly for me?
Yes, sir. It's been pretty much viewed that there is a transition of land uses between a more intense and a less intense land use is a good approach to planning, and that's secured through zoning. And the single-family residences to the south, at some point, that line has got to be drawn between them and the more intense commercial intersection and interchange area. And this plan calls for an area of multifamily in between. And that's not been viewed as bad planning. In fact, we experienced it other places in our community. It's worked well.
Any other questions or comments by members of the planning commission?
How much of a bend is on that curve on Warrior Drive? The bend in the curve, how much of a straightening out would be needed to?
It's kind of hard to describe when you say how much because we're talking about degrees when you've got a circle like that. But what we would do is we'd try to make the radius larger. What that would do is make it less sharp than it is now and make it more gentle. Those type of roadway improvements would improve it. Also, we would more than likely see closer attention to the vegetation inside of that curve. Site distance is a little bit of an issue there, particularly when there's access drives. We will be very careful about keeping landscaping out of those site-distance areas. We've identified that is something that we're going to need to be, have to review very carefully. We don't want whoever develops it to be planting trees that will block someone's view, but also the existing vegetation that's grown up. We may see an opportunity to see that improved a little bit. I believe in trees. I believe in landscaping, but in a place like that, it could actually be causing problems that need to be, that can be improved by removing or limiting. So we may look at an alternative landscaping plan. But what I understand, we're looking at a little bit over an acre of land that's going to need to be dedicated. And I think Mr. Pearl, certainly Mr. Harney, is very much aware of what's needed because we looked at it before and he was part of that review. And actually, Mr. Ives has pointed out, there's an illustration in your materials that Ms. Ely prepared that would show you basically how much we're talking about. In fact, it would be this little illustration right here. I don't have my magnifying glass. Mr. Young may have his. But you can see it says something about a proposed rightaway dedication.
We've got all that.
And it's, this shows you, it's a little bit over an acre. It shows you the area that would become the new rightaway. And the road would be shifted towards the property.
Any other questions? To let the people in attendance tonight know how this will work, we will have a motion in a little while either to approve or deny this request. If it is approved, it will go before the city council. At the city council level, they will have another public hearing. If it is approved there, then it would still have to come back before this body for our site plan approval, subdivision approval here. So there is a process involved here. If it is turned down here tonight, the applicants still have an opportunity, if he so chose, to take it before the city council. All that being said, if there's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'm here for approval of subject's statement.
Second. Motion is made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next public hearing is a zoning change request to rezone the Creekwood subdivision, approximately 29.8 acres, from RS-15 to residential duplex located west of South Church Street, which is Highway 231. Tim and Sandra Darley are the applicants. Ms. Ely?
Good evening again, gentlemen. This is the second public hearing, the final public hearing of the evening, and it is to consider rezoning the Creekwood subdivision that's located just west of South Church Street or Highway 231, however you'd like to refer to it. I've shaded the area orange on the map that you have before you and the map that's on the screen. The properties are currently zoned RS-15 in that single-family residential district, and they consist of 35 two-family dwellings that are located within this area. Those dwellings are located on the following streets: Carolyn or Caroline Drive, I'm not sure which one's correct, I've heard different ones from the property owners; Dixon Court, Carriage Drive, and Creekwood Court. The properties to the north are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District, and RM12, Multifamily Residential District. Properties to the west are zoned RZ, Residential Zero Lot Line. To the south, properties are zoned RM12, Multifamily District, and RM16, and that's the location of the Waterford Apartment Complex. And the properties that are along the eastern side that are adjacent to Highway 231 are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. The property owner of the property that's in the hatched area, you can see that I've put a label on it that says area requesting rezoning. The property owner approached planning staff and asked for his property to be rezoned. He's running into some sort of stumbling blocks with using the full potential of his property, and at that time, it came to staff's attention that what's existing on the property is a two-family dwelling, so it's a duplex, those are interchangeable terms. And under the RS-15 zone, if something were to completely demolish the house for some reason, if there were tornadoes, take it away, the property owners do not have a right to build that two-family dwelling back. They would have to build a single-family house. And so he approached staff and asked if there were a zone that would be more appropriate that would allow him to utilize the full potential of the property, and staff identified the RD District, which is the duplex residential district, as a zone that would be appropriate because it would permit the currently existing two-family dwelling. And staff hasn't had any, or hasn't had any reports of any problems with two-family dwellings being located here. The RD District states in rezoning ordinance that it's the development and maintenance of residential areas characterized by single and two-family dwellings on lots of at least 8,000 square feet. So if somebody did want to make one of these a single-family dwelling, they would still be able to do that. So if you were to rezone it from RS-15 to RD, they would still have the opportunity to use the property as a single-family residential district. Well, Mr. Darley got the attention of staff, and we brought to you the issue, and the planning commission decided to study a broader area, to study the entire Creekwood subdivision because what we have is a case where these are all two-family dwellings, and because they're zoned RS-15, they're all non-conforming uses, which means that they could not be rebuilt if they were completely destroyed as two-family dwellings. The Creekwood subdivision was platted in 1978 in Rutherford County, and it was then developed with 35 duplexes, which were originally all in separate tanks, some now are on sewer. City of Murfreesboro annexed the Creekwood subdivision in 1995, and we annexed that subdivision because we didn't want to completely surround an area, unincorporated area, so sometimes we call that our island rule. And so it was annexed by the city's own volition. And so at that time, and at this time, if property is annexed in the city and it's zoned for residential purposes or agricultural purposes in the county, it gets a default and it's zoned as RS-15. So because nobody requested this property to be zoned something differently, it automatically is zoned RS-15, Single Family Residential District. It was discussed, when I read the minutes and the staff comments, that sometime in the future, the staff would want to bring in zoning- the future, the staff would wanna bring a zoning plan before the planning commission to consider a different zone for these properties. Um, of course, that is happening now. So the, um, I've had several conversations with people who've seen the signs of putting around there, or sent letters, and they all seemed sort of surprised that the properties are zoned RS fifteen, and mo, I haven't had anybody tell me they were against it, but I was sure to tell them that they had that, um, that privilege to come and speak, uh, for or against it. The planning commission did consider this entire area, so the public hearing that you're holding this evening will be to consider rezoning approximately twenty-nine point eight acres from RS fifteen to RD, residential duplex. And if you do rezone it to RD, then the existing thirty-five two-family dwellings will be uses that are permitted by right, and they will no longer be lawfully established non-conforming uses. So, um, the planning commission should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning this property, and if you have any questions about it, either now or after the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer them.
Ms. Eve, do you know if the applicant has a statement they would like to make?
Actually, yes, I'm glad you said that. I think Tim and Sandra Darley are here, and Mr. Darley would like to say something.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much. We purchased the property in two thousand and five while I was still in the service and ordered for my son to go to NTSU. And in two thousand and six, while we were building our home in Christiana, we lived in one side and my son lived on the other side for the next couple of years. Uh, during that time period, we put about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of improvement to the property as well. Since I paid cash for the property in two thousand and five, it was never mentioned about the RS fifteen and the, uh, stipulations that would go with that. Uh, a majority of my business is in the offshore, a business in the Gulf of Mexico, and being with the times as they are, with the Gulf moratorium on drilling and so forth, um, I really needed to, a little excess cash if I could, and try to take a loan out on the property. That's when I found out about the non-conforming issue. So five different banks locally and nationally, I refused, uh, my application at the very end, of course. And we also lost a sale, uh, last year, uh, through a VA-approved loan, too. So nobody will touch the property, uh, as long as it has this non-conforming stipulation on it. So I have a piece of property now that I can't sell, uh, and I can't take a loan against as well. So, uh, uh, my name is Tim Darley, seventy-seven oh six, Brattlewood Drive, Christiana, Tennessee, by the way. And, uh, thank you very much for your time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from members of the planning commission?
Chairman Lam, if there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning change, subject to staff comments.
And I'll second add motion.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Darley. We'll move on to the gateway design overlay portion of our agenda tonight, we have one item under that, that is the McCabe Office Building, a final design review and site plan review for seventeen thousand and sixteen square feet on three point one eight-eight acres, zone heavy industrial and GDO four, located on Medical Center Parkway. Dr. Craig McCabe is the developer. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Chairman Lam and members of the planning commission. Tonight, this is the final design review for the McCabe Office Building, located on Medical Center Parkway. It's located in the Carpenter subdivision and is located, um, on the property just adjacent, um, or behind the Burger King and also the Strip Center that Mr. Hale and Mr. Kirby built a couple of years ago, just to familiarize, um, the people at home with the property and its location. And this building is, um, you reviewed and approved the, uh, design of the building on the initial design review. And if we could go to the screen, I have the black and white architecturals of the plan, and it's a little bit difficult to see, um, but it will be an all-brick structure with metal accents and, um, um, also a canopy along the way. It will speak and be directed toward Medical Center Parkway, even though it has a, um, quite a bit of a distance off Medical Center Parkway, the way that property is located. Um, the property went before the Board of Zoning Appeals last month and received a variance for the maximum setback in GDO four. Um, there is a maximum setback requirement in GDO four, and because of the shape of the property, it precluded them from being able to meet that variance. The, um, if we could come up to me, I'm gonna TV. These are the samples of the bricks that have been selected, and the, there's, it's a three-tone brick, um, building, and it will have, of course, a defined base, middle, and, um, top, and then also will have a cast stone, and then accents will be these two colors of the metal right here, this lighter color and this darker titanium color. This right here is the storefront system that will be utilized. If you'll recall, at the last meeting, we had some discussion about the brick. Um, the, um, this darker brick has that, um, that iron oxidat, oxidization in it that helps give it some of that charcoal color to tie into the metal accents. And then the middle, um, did not, although I'm not sure we can find it, the middle color, um, in staff's opinion, just wasn't, um, bold enough for that building, um, and so the architect has asked if you will approve it for staff to just, um, work with the architect in the field before the brick is installed to, for the middle brick, um, just find a couple of bricks. We're just gonna take a few out in the field as the building is going up and make a decision in the field if you're acceptable of that. So staff and the architect will do that together. And the site plan itself is in very good order, um, there's not really a lot of comments related to the site plan, and the fire department, um, the engineer and myself met with the fire department and went over the access issues, and we feel they're comfortable with the access that's been designed. And it looks as though it functions, um, as, as a, as a narrow turnaround, but it's all concrete, it's just differentiated by the actual textures of the concrete, but those are still drivable surfaces for fire apparatus. Um, and in addition, the site, the landscaping plan has been revised to add additional landscaping, um, at the front underneath the canopy, as well as down the corridor leading from Medical Center Parkway. The way that this subdivision was set up, um, a few years ago, is that there was gonna be no landscaping along the detention pond. Um, this owner's property only has about five feet on the side adjacent to the detention pond between the existing paved drive off Medical Center Parkway, that is that drive that you can connect over from Med Center to Memorial. Um, and he only has about five feet, and it precludes him from being able to actually install, um, the required trees. He's still meeting with his front planting yard requirements back on the site as you move away from Medical Center, but down that one corridor, he can't place trees, but he has come up with a shrubbery plan, and so it'll be on both sides to try to frame that drive a little bit more as you come into it from Medical Center. Um, in addition, those drives will be striped three-lane accesses, both off Medical Center and Memorial Boulevard, so that they're more of a rare, or function more as rare access drives. I would gladly answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Ms. Logan, I'm sure if the architect can, uh, satisfy you of what they're doing, he would certainly be happy with it. From what I see right here, it's definitely an improvement over the old Cromwell's building that occupied part of the site, so. If there's no further questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Move on to Platts and Plans, we have one item under Platts and Plans, that being Jackson Village, Lot one A, site planned for fifteen hundred square feet on point four-six acres, zone commercial highway, located at the corner of Joby Jackson Parkway and Mayoral Court. Pradeep Agnawada is the developer. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. The site plan is for a fast food restaurant located at the corner of Mayoral Court and Joby Jackson, and, and you have a copy of the site plan, um, in your files, it's for a subway building. The architecture will be very similar to the architecture of the Greenland Drive subway, and we're gonna utilize that again, and, um, if, if you've seen the new building, I think it turned out pretty good. This one will be oriented a little different, so we'll make sure that it speaks appropriately to the front street. It'll have a front on both medicals, I mean, on Mayoral Court and on Joby Jackson, so, um, the, but it'll be the same architecture, brick, um, with the Ephys accents, same colors, um, introducing bronze-colored storefront and the bronze awnings as well. Um, the applicant has shown, um, an access drive to a Lot one B. He owns all of Lot one and only plans to utilize about half an acre for this site, a little more than half an acre, and he's not sure at this time what he wants to do with the rest of the property. But what we wanna make sure gets into the record tonight is that there will not be any access to Joby Jackson from Lot one B. The only access needs to come through this Lot one A. And so we have, um, asked him, and he has complied to design that site to allow for access easements through the sites, so that he can accommodate additional, an additional user there if they need access, so there'll be a joint access easement, so access to Lot one B will come through one A with no direct access onto Joby Jackson. Um, it's just not, there's just not enough, um, distance there between I twenty-four and Mayoral Court to be adding driveway ramps there on Joby. Um, the applicant may choose to develop that lot himself, he may in the going and doing a, adding on to the existing building that he's gonna build for the subway and, and make it all a part of a strip center, which would be similar to the one he built, like on Medical Center. Um, but at this point, he just doesn't really know what he wants to do with the property. So he knows he wants to go ahead and get the subway in, and then he'll worry about what, uh, what comes later. In fact, Ms. Adelot, I'll be meeting with him in a couple of weeks, try to look at how, what other ideas for the future on that property. The staff worked with the applicant on the landscaping plan, and the urban environmental department reviewed the landscaping plan, the revised landscaping plan that you all received in your packets today, and it's much better, and it does meet and comply with our requirements. Um, and they've also shown irrigation, they've submitted a form metric plan, and overall, the site plan is in good order. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question? Now we're ready for a motion.
Based on, uh, rather, Mr. Chairman, based on staff comments, I, 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 um, I recommend that we approve this.
Second.
So, staff comments, presume? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made, subject to staff comments and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to staff reports, Gateway Streetscape Master Plan amendments and updates, planning staff has half come. Ms. Logan?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. If you'll recall during our last work session meeting, staff brought up to you and I, a couple of ideas of amendments that needed to be made to the Gateway Streetscape Master Plan, in our opinion, to run it by you and see if you concurred. The first item that I wanna talk to you about is, um, the street lights for Robert Rose Drive and other streets that are gonna come into the gateway as development occurs, and the need to look at additional lighting as well as the decorative lighting. Um, I have on the screen a picture, if we could go to the screen. The, this is the decorative lighting that currently exists on the north side of Robert Rose Drive, it does not go all the way over to Thompson Lane. In fact, it goes down to about the curvature in the road, and then where that swampy marshy area is, the light, the street lighting stops, and then the street lighting is picked back up again over where the access to the Hampton Inn and Aldese is, right there, Robert Rose and Thompson. But those are the old-style mongoose fixtures, I mean, before we really even had Gateway and were looking at these kinds of op, uh, ideas. So we have already two mixes of lighting on that street. Um, in meeting with the electric department, they have had some concerns about the use of only electric, uh, or only decorative lighting for lighting. Um, it's used, it's working well on Medical Center where it's used in combination with the mongoose fixtures. The mongoose fixtures come down the sides and in the median, and then the decorative lighting is spaced in between those, and it works well. But on Conference Center Boulevard and this section of Robert Rose where it's the sole source of lighting, the glare issues and the number of lights and the maintenance that it's taking to keep that going have caused them some concern. Staff went and visited the site with Murfreesboro Electric to try to come up with ideas, and what we've presented for you tonight is a lighting plan, and it's very difficult to see, but, um, I will explain that up until the curvature of the road, which is five-hundred-and-sixty linear feet approximately from the center line of, um, Medical Center Parkway, would be decorative light fixtures. And we hope and we believe that that would pretty much keep that same look that you see now as you travel down Medical Center Parkway. We don't wanna, uh, we don't wanna interrupt that visual and the aesthetic that you all in the community have come to expect in that area. However, then, we would transition as you move further back in the property, back towards Wilkinson, to the thirty-five-foot-tall black square mongoose fixtures. Those are the fixtures that are utilized throughout the gateway, they're not the same type of mongoose fixtures you see on Broad Street or the old-style, they're the square, very simple, clean-lined, black, um, finished coating mongoose fixtures is what they're called, that, um, are through Medical Center, they're all, there are the lights that light Arnhart, Gateway, et cetera, in that section of the gateway. Um, and so we're looking at that combination. Um, that's some, some, the idea that we've been presented with, and we would look at using this again on other streets as we move forward with development in the gateway. The second idea that we wanted to bring before you tonight is looking at adding a European hornbeam tree for our street trees for Fortress Boulevard. Um, we don't have a European hornbeam currently right now in there, it calls for a maple tree, but as we are moving forward and looking at how to accomplish site distance, making sure that we do not have site distance issues or trees that are growing out over the sidewalk, that if, if you'll see, the shape of this tree, it grows up and not really out, um, and is easily limbed, so that we don't get, uh, limb overhang into the street and that we can protect site distance as we move down Fortress Boulevard. Um, you know, we have this, the, the plan that was developed years ago called for landscaping in this area, called for street trees, called for maple tree. The urban environmentalists and the city, uh, urban environmental department, the city horticulturalists have worked with the city engineering department to try to come up with a tree that will not cause, uh, problems on the roadway, but will still provide the street trees that the, uh, planning commission and city council envisioned for that area. So we need to add this to the, um, streets, trees that are listed in the, in the booklet as well. Staff would suggest that these are, uh, changes that would probably necessitate a public hearing, um, so we would ask you tonight if you're okay with moving forward with this. Um, some of these changes that we look at is trying to set our public hearing for our next meeting, which is April the twentieth. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Young, you're still awake?
Uh, I was, European hornbeam, I was gonna ask Ms. Logan if she knew the Latin name of that.
Yes, it's a, um, I'm not, I won't be embarrassed to say, but a car, carpiness, fasti, fastiagata, something like that. I can spell it, F-A-S-T-I-G-A-T-A. I just can't say it. I mean, most people can't understand me when I talk normally.
She's just trying to figure out if they can make a hardwood floor out of it.
I presume this means we have no relevant questions for you.
What day you want the public hearing?
Um, April twentieth at our business meeting, since this is more of a business-type item that would affect our development community.
Mr. Adelot, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna, uh, chime in and say exactly what Ms. Logan did, that this, this is the kind of thing that the designers, the engineers, uh, who may already have business with us, um, may want to attend. Uh, we can, I'll probably have it in the room two eighteen, unless y'all wanna move down here, just so we can tell us.
Two eighteen, big time. Mr. Young, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Other business, I think you have an item for other business, don't you, Ms. Logan? A late submittal, not on our agenda.
It's our legal department.
Well, instead of being a late submittal, it's really a, a recent development, or breaking news. Breaking news, as they say on the news.
No, and actually, no, this is not, um, a, a new fault, like, like Mr. Adelot said, it's a recent development, and we wanna keep this moving. Um, if, if you'll recall, you approved a plat earlier tonight for the corner of Thompson Lane, North Thompson Lane and Gateway Boulevard, um, a proper, a plat that the city prepared, it's about two-point-three acre tract, um, that is under contract with Middle Tennessee Medical Center for purchase. Um, as part of that property, you may have noticed that there was a small part of that land that was shown for, and then a sewer pump station, it's an abandoned sewer pump station that the city still retains. Um, and we, that sewer pump station has long been abandoned, all of the service equipment has been removed, and the water and sewer department sees no reason for the city to retain that property. We would like to include it as part of that property, and they, the hospital would pay the same per-square-foot price for that property as they are for the remain, the remainder of the tract. Um, however, because it involves the sale and the disposition of city property, that requires the approval of the city council and the planning commission to approve such under a mandatory referral. Um, I've prepared an exhibit for you attached to the letter that was prepared by Mr. Ives, and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Logan or Ms. Ives?
Uh, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Adelot, Ms. Logan, any other business?
Um, I have no other business.
No further business, we stand adjourned.